Thank you very much. We request all of us to rise for a national anthem.
Si, abongakulu, ntela kutso sonesi sugubemanje stokonaktula, ajelitulule sive.
Ossisileleli Africa, marupa lalisu ponorayo, niswaini tana soyejú. Ossigelela china, nusaporayo. Murena buruka sijama sae su, buzele selle tali masweli.
Oseboloke.
Oseboloke sijama sae su, sijama sae su, South Africa, South Africa. Edufano sengima, edidikafano si. South Africa to come together and unite in the strength of freedom, in South Africa.
Ngiaabonga.
Thank you very much. We are here as the Portfolio Committee of OMAFES.
Ngiaabonga kulu silapa sili komidi lili bugale tinsaba, hadele tigole tasekaya.
On my left is Honorable Muliwa.
Ngala pesanle, nsamsesnle, le gune mshonishwa Muliwa.
On close to me is Honorable Desmond Muela.
Eh, tute na, mi gune mshonishwa Desmond Muela.
On my right close is veteran Lukota.
Eh, ngala esegula sa, mi guneska kailisi ngomshonishwa Lukota.
And on extreme right is Honorable Fenermerwe, our coach.
Ngale, gue esegula futi, gu konna Honorable Fenermerwe.
And if you can see, we have members of the staff of parliament.
Uma wongabuka kalesne, malu nga li palamende.
Who assisting this process to take notes on your submission that you are going to do.
Le gasitange, gu tata eman notes, igu logo, lini tabeni paga misa.
We want also to thank you for allowing us to delay because of the logistics as you observe.
Si, funa futi ne gune bo nga kutsinisbegate, le le gulo guputale sibena, gojengobe nbonile.
Our time is scheduled from 10 o'clock to half past 12 or 1 o'clock.
Si, katse se tute sileleke suga insimbe lishumi, guyaguleyeli se ikabanga insimbe lishumi, nabili gumbi insimbe ekala.
We are here to allow yourself to make inputs on the amendment bill that is before the portfolio committee.
Sila paktu ni getal tuvali kutsinikone, na ni gwendati paramiso, glo msetwa sivivinya, lo tribi eloago igu le portfolio committee.
You'll recall that the Constitutional Court declared that Electoral Act 73 of 1998 is unconstitutional.
Nita okumbula kutsi ingandolo, etemsetwa, no ma etemsetwa sisekelo, iya paramisa, kutsi leskaba, lesbalwa Rosalomsetwa, asihambisane msetwa sisekelo.
That it does not allow independent candidates or individuals to participate on the provincial and national elections.
Ngobe ai vumeli kutsi emalu nga la fudanke, nalalketwa atimele, no be angenelila etifunzini awakonu kutsi anangena, ngalo msetwa ngalintela uka konna.
So parliament has been directed to change that anomaly.
So ngalo wa ipalamende, ini getwe, skatse kutsi ikone gulungisa logo.
What happened is that immediately the directive, the Minister for OMAFES appointed a task team.
Logwe ndekile kutsi lese lulego sise naski shoko, besa gu misualtsimba liltite, liltawo bukanana lomsebendi.
Which extensively consulted with the stakeholders on the proposed amendment.
Le gulitsimba lilebeseli akona kutsi likone gu ngotulisa, na nobel pume, libonisana nabobongela bat sinesegago, glo msetwa.
A report was tabled before Executive.
Gu besa kishwa umbigo, abegwa pambi, gwe buholi.
And Cabinet tabled the bill on the 10th of January 2022.
Wa besa kutseki cabinet ya, besa ibega lomsetwa sivivinya, ngamshaga 10, gu jenuar, no ma pimbitvane, glo minyaga losedul.
Which was referred to as the Portfolio Committee of OMAFES.
Gu ngago besa uljulselwa kisi siko miti lili bugale tinsaba, teltigole tasekaya.
We then issued, we then invited the minister for interaction.
Si besa getsinasimema umpatsi, sawa kutsa buyes ta obonisana shtoto san.
We issued the invitation for returns, for inviting members of the community or South Africans to write, to do return submission to the portfolio committee.
Si besa senda sasimemo, se kutsi aluga mpakati na uakonu, lo kutsi abeni livi, lilebeseli abuwa ngala, lilitwa ngala kisi sili komiti lili bugale lomsebendi.
And the closing date was on the 21st of February 2022.
Lila ngalekvalwa, begunglo mshaga 21, glenyanga inlovan, lomnyaga losedul.
We then also received requests for oral submissions.
Si besa futi sitwala titelo, tekutsla banye banatsanza, gwendati etwulu, batikulu mely.
Which was conducted on the, on the 2nd and the 3rd of.
Logwe involene ndege ngamshala luluni, ngamshala titimbili, gule nyanga ya February.
After that, the Portfolio Committee, two public hearings.
Emva logwe le komitlili bugale lomsebendi, pete satsasno, mo se kutsi ipume.
Then started our public hearings ilimpopo in Kwasunata.
Si besa estala gu thwala luvulo, mpakati le elimpopo na Kwasunata.
We started ilimpopo on Monday.
Si besi selimpopo ngemvulo.
We concluded yesterday.
Si besa estra itolu.
Were starting in Pumalanga in Bumbela today.
Si, akta na ngamshala apa in Pumalanga in Bumbela.
Will go to Emelo tomorrow.
Xasa staobanga emelo.
And Mittelbeck after that.
Emva logwe sibange se Emmetlibeg.
So the portfolio committee here, they don't have any decision on the options on amendment bill.
Le komitlili nibona mbiguenu, aena totino mole tita we, ndaklo msetwa lo tribi eloago.
Were here to listen to your views.
Sila pagutova imi bonoyenu.
And once all the public hearings have been concluded.
Uma se gwendiwe, goonge lugu lalela, lugu gwendiwa esivini, se gu petiwe.
The committee will sit and deliberate on the issues that you have submitted.
Le komitda obese isala pasi sija bonsana, gule tinsaba, lini tobeni tipaga misile.
In summary, the amendment bill proposed two options.
Ga fushaneje, lomsetwa siviv.
The electoral system that is, we are currently using is intact.
O paramisa kutsi lenlela yete luketwa, lisi sibende sakogunya lo, i bugeto.
We have to create a method or modalities to include independent candidates.
Gofane le sa ke litri nganome lisu, le kutsi fake katse emalu nga langenala ketwa atimele.
The second option is that you must go to, must conduct election on constituency based process.
You can repeat that please.
The amendment bill in summary, it proposed two options. The amendment bill that you are dealing with, it proposed two options.
Lomsetwa lo tribi elo, le skulmangaola, o paramisa tinwoletimbili, ngaketwa guto.
The first one is that you must maintain the current electoral system.
Utzi lokala sengayegela, njengobe njalo, lini tela, lisi chendiswa romanjia gule tete kethwa.
And include or have modalities to include independent candidates.
No ma siketshe guba netinela, leti sete, leti sitetekfaga ekasi, emalu nga langenala luketwa atimele.
The second one is a constituency based electoral process.
Yes, bi, le kutsi gumele sibene, lini tela, yelu kethwa, lita wosachendiswa le emaovisla, e, 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 etinlangan.
Those recommendations.
Le titi paramiso.
They don't represent the position of the portfolio committee.
Adisha kutsi ngolokfuna ngle komitlili lapa.
We are bringing them here for you give, to look on other methods on how you can enhance this legislation.
Sinesitela paktu vagi, ni kutsi ngtiple tiniyetinela, etingange, to kutsi gulungiso lulsel.
As I said, at the end of the public hearing.
Njengobe yengacho, uma se kpele lugu lalela sive, nisgwendago.
The committee would deliberate and take a decision, a report to be submitted to the National Assembly.
Le komitlili lapa manja, ita obese i tata goonge lulokshiwa, sija akonani kutsi balu, umbigo, lita uljulisa gubanza kulu.
So when we are political parties, individuals who are here, when they make submission, they must be respected.
Uma ngabe ema krembo, etembusa, ve no ma labatimele, ba paramisa loksite, gumele, ba shonishwe.
We are going to allocate you five minutes to make your own submission.
Stagu ni getaskatse, ngabanginzuzle slan, kutsi nao wendetaga kotti paramiso.
How we are going to do it is that if you see on this here.
O lini tela, lestaku ndango, uma ubuka la, gune lusluwe tishalo.
We have a team of our staff who are going to assist you.
Si, neti sibende tethu letikona la, lita ukonaku.
We are going to identify 10 hands as a first group.
Stau besesi komba atanda, letilishumi, njengel krembo lekala, lestau kulum.
Then you come and make your own submission to the portfolio committee.
Ota obese geni akonaku sinitela papa mbili, nende tetwulu tieno igu le komit.
So we are going to listen, take notes with the team and members here.
Stau besesi akonaku lalela, besa bayapala, palalala, basila pana, ne malu.
No one must be excluded from this process.
Agaye kolekme la, valilo ngapande, glo lsel.
I want to repeat, no one is going to be excluded from this process.
Agaye kolo tavo valilo ngapande, glo lsel, ngiyapi nza futi.
If you recall, there was a social media.
Uma ngabe tavo kumbulaga, alebe, gune lukfagiwe, engulde nitektuman.
That the portfolio committee has excluded people in Toyoanjo.
Kutso akonale, komitlili valile ngapande, labanyela bat site.
And I want to repeat it to be on record.
Ngifuna gu pinza, logo kutsi gukone gupalwa.
That we have not, we have never excluded people from the hall.
Kutsi azang esivalile bandu ngapande, ema olin.
So we have methods on how we are dealing with the proceedings.
Si neti tela, tethu te kutsi sibampancha, nilingubo.
They will observe our process throughout.
So lili komitlili njengobe lakonala, tavo buka kanji, sawa lingingubo yetu, gu te ifige eklinen.
At the end of this process.
Sorry?
At the end of this process.
Eklinen walolselo.
Those that are spreading negative or lies to this process.
Labola basaba lisa ema ngalolselo.
Will properly respond to them.
Stau akonaku suspenvula, ne gana bongenzi la ya kon.
By this stage, we want to give our people to make submission to the committee.
Sinespisa usisni gete bandu luthuba, le kutsi bendetetwulu tabo igu le komit.
I'm now going to recognize hands, the 10 hands that must queue on the line.
Manjen tao satali luthu bangikone gubona, no ma ngi lithuba, gule tansala, letilishumi, dekala, leti ngitoltawa, ndati paramiso.
You raise your hand. Once you are done, we go to another pitch.
O paramisa santsa, sa, uma sokonjiwe, utanga pambi ili ukonekshala, la, ni belishumi, uma senketsi, nda obese nbiela imove.
I'm now recognizing hands.
Senkali le manjen ngikomba tansla.
So you can use any language for submission, don't have a challenge.
Uma ngabe wenda setwulu, ngasibendisa, no ma ngabe ngulupi lulwi me, ange gubenengi.
We have a team here that are going to assist us to interpret your submissions.
Sine li krembo le aboto li kililitasitana, uma ngabe usibendisa lulwi luko, gwendase tulu sakwa.
Are these the only name hands that you.
Ti bonile na, ngobe si tsaletilishumi.
Okay.
Gulungile again.
No, we are not forcing people. We are here, yeah, the third one.
Nasia lisiesa, astunze telemonvo.
We are encouraging you to make submission because you are here.
Sini kutzata kutsi nende tetwulu, ngobe nikonila.
Yeah, the fourth one, then we'll come to a second round.
Stau besa stwala omchigeleto wesbi.
Number four.
Ukona wesine.
Okay, we'll come to second round, let's start with the, once you, when you finish, just put your submission there, on the, what you must do, you must say, I'm Desmond Muela.
Inu lefanele nie, nde kutso umunfu atetwule, njengesbonela kutsi ngingu Desmond Muela.
So that you are assisting us for the team to record who made submission and so forth and so on.
Ngobe, ngegwenda njalo, tavo konaksitali litsimba, letfu lukoni, lugu palaga, ale, kutsi ngban, lugu endespara miso watsin.
Thank you, you can start.
Ngiaabong.
Thank you very much. I am Clement Malangos Simsongo, from Lanzene region, Nzigazi subregion. We thank you very much for this opportunity that you've given us as members of the community and as people who were participating, participating in the elections. One, I was participating in the elections as an independent candidate. And to be honest, when I saw that this bill was to be restructured, I was so happy. One, this bill speaks to the realities of our communities, the realities of what is happening within our words, within the processes of, of, of elections. One, we need to understand that independent candidates, they don't just pop up from nowhere. Independent candidates are in, 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 as a symbol of certain processes that did not go well, as a symbol of some discrepancies that take place when the processes of electing councillors and the process of electing PR councillors take place. So this bill says to the voter, to the normal person who lo shala no ma ngub.
It says.
Who stays anywhere?
It says you can choose anyone and anyone that you feel can work for the community. Because we must remember, we've been having elections for years. By the way, I'm a member of the African National Congress, in good standing of course. Though I attended, as I said, I was an independent candidate, gulama processes law. If you want to understand, we can, I can explain to you outside. But what I'm trying to say is, processes that lead to branches having to rely on independent candidates are as follows. One, the community will have a certain person, even if he's a member of any organization, but the processes that are being used by our organizations are manipulative, we all know this story. So this bill, what it says, it says before anyone can be a leader of any organization, it brings us back to the basics to say, before anyone can be a leader of any organization, that person is a leader of a community. So now, what, what that says, it says, no ma ngabe, i organization.
Even if an organization.
La laguyo, no ma la, 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 la.
Where the candidates belong to.
Yes, it's na no ma ngabe lewenslangano layo, inga guboni, logo, logubono anglo mang.
Then. Even if the organization does not see what the community or the public sees in the person.
The potential, the capacity, the capabilities, the work ethic of that particular person. If an organization, of the organization that that person belongs to does not recognize or realize that capacity, then now it gives the opportunity, it gives the community that opportunity to say, but now, yes, we are members of this organization. Yes, we, we see capacity in this man or woman, in this member. But now, since there are processes that are driven by organizations, if they don't favor, no ma, if they don't support what we see, because in reality, why we have councillors? We have councillors because service deliveries must be implemented. And now if members of the community can realize that, yes, this is the person, maybe that our organization, as different as they are, is, is lobbying for and whatnot, but now we are given the opportunity to go to the grounds, isn't it? To express our, 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 our interest in that particular person. But now if still our interests are not met, then we have an option. Because some of us, we, 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 we can't like wake up one day and say, I'm joining another opposition party and so forth. But being an independent candidate, it gives the opportunity and option to say, but now this is a member of sort and soul, but this is not recognized in the manner in which we see and, and, and think that he can assist our community in whatever it is that we need as a community. So in a nutshell, I say I support this bill. One, because it brings transparency, it brings honesty, because when they elect you, the people that, that, when they elect you, that means you serve them, you don't serve any other structure, you serve the people. So that service delivery is implemented, because we have to be honest, our country is in a very dire state. Corruption has corrupted us, our minds has corrupted development, has demolished everything. So it is us that we need to stand and say, we can't sit back like it's business as usual. We have to stand up, we have to wake up and smell the coffee and make sure that the, the, the sufferings or the challenges that we are facing today, our kids, the next generation, they don't experience. But it can be if we keep on doing it the very same way, because mine is to say, we cannot apply the same method and expect a different outcome. So if we keep on applying this same method, then now we're saying it is fine. But now if we change the method, then now it says, even our organizations as they are, as stable and strong as they are, they will now start to work hard, those councillors that have been elected, they'll start working hard.
Work towards your, your conclusion.
Yeah, they'll start working hard knowing that we have, and the community has an option to, to elect whoever they feel can work for them, irregardless of whichever party they affiliate. So in a nutshell, I say I support this bill and it will assist us, it will assist even the ordinary voter to say, meaning Yamati, babesigalala, babesigalala.
It will assist them to say, at least I know Mr. Sigalala, for example.
Yeah, he's been here, he's been assisting families, he's been assisting the community at large. We as the community, we feel that this man or this woman can lead us correctly and can bring service delivery. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for, for your submission. Next.
Good day all, my name is Stacy Lee Engelbrich. I'm a proud owner of a local waste management company in Bumbela, a youth activist and a concerned citizen opposed to the bill the government intends to pass. Because it is unconstitutional, hello?
Can you assist?
Hello, there we go, you're working.
Okay, process, thank you.
Hello, okay. Because it's unconstitutional and does not allow for the true direct elections of our leaders to parliament. I feel it is important for us to start holding individuals accountable for their actions as opposed to political parties. As a business owner in the waste management sector, I have witnessed countless issues in service delivery and complete lack of accountability. With our current system in place, it becomes difficult for one to hold an individual responsible for any mishaps. We need a constituency based system that gives all individuals equal chance of being able to run and stand as representatives for us, the people. There are countless factors that make this new bill amendment unconstitutional. However, for today, I will, I will be particularly focusing on independence limited access to 200 seats in parliament. In terms of the Electoral Amendment Bill, independent candidates are not able to contest the 200 national to national seats in the National Assembly. An independent candidate may only contest the regional seats in the National Assembly. Therefore, out of 400 of the seats in assembly, the 200 national to national seats are reserved for political parties only. This is limiting to both independent candidates and citizens' rights to vote. Political parties are able to contest the national to national seats and a political party that, that does not obtain sufficient votes to win any regional seat may still obtain a compensatory seat in National Assembly. This is not the same for independent candidates. As previously mentioned, according to the Electoral Amendment Bill, an independent candidate will not be able to win seats in the National Assembly despite receiving sufficient votes to meet the quota of votes per national to national seat. This appears to be a move that allows for political parties to remain as the main occupants in parliament. Through this amendment, independents are not given equal opportunity and voters may feel as if their vote is not being fairly heard. As a whole, South Africa has a very low voter turnout and by placing limitations that clearly place political parties in a more favorable position, further reduces voter participation. The People's Bill allows independent candidates to contest all 400 seats of the National Assembly, both the regional and compensatory seats. All candidates will be, will have equal access and equal opportunity to win a seat. To me, this sounds like a democracy. We should not fear allowing independent candidates into parliament. As a democracy and a nation that stands strongly by the notion of Ubuntu, we should know that working with each other and for each other makes us as a nation stronger. Thank you for the opportunity you've given me to speak, I am because we are.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you Chair. Greetings to members of the public and all parties represented. And esteemed members of parliament. My name is Vusi Tube. I'm a resident of Salubinza Watfai in Bumbela. I'm a member of Ba Fuwi Party.
The Farmers Association.
It's a farmers association. We are also stakeholders in this bill that parliament is amending. My submission is to the first part that is proposed by the committee.
As opposed to the constituency based representation.
I'm not sure if I'm too close to the speaker or there is a challenge generally.
Your own point, I'm saying you are audible, I don't know why are you disrupting yourself.
I ended up not here understanding what was going on.
So, le PR list system.
The PR list system. In the state that is prevailing in South Africa. I think it's the best that we can work for us. If you can relate to the election that we just had in terms of local government. It became evident that when independent candidates are participating, we have no control in terms of managing the gender balance, especially towards women being represented. The same goes with the youth, because if you can notice those who are much older are able to convince the community.
So, ngalezo sizathu, sithanza kusekela kulu, le party representation.
It is for that reason that we support the first one, but we are not opposing to say independent candidates can also participate. It will have its own challenges to say, "How is it managed when we have long list of candidates when going for the elections?" What I think can pose a challenge for the work of the Electoral Commission? The reasons that I mentioned. It makes us to oppose the system of going to elections using the constituency system. I believe that the Constitutional Court was not... I am missing my notes. I think... I think independent candidates must also given a chance or an opportunity like political parties. That can assist in terms of giving equal opportunities. So that both parties, the political parties and the independent candidates, can participate equally. I will end there for now.
Thank you. Next.
Greetings.
And all protocols observed. I'm my tutor, Steffeline Makakula from Komazi. A teacher by profession. And also I'm a flourish licensed host. I'm dealing with pregnant women and babies. I'm a facilitator for trauma and counseling in one of the colleges. And also I'm affiliating in our local organizations and I'm participating in my community. As a, I'm in a, in one of the community, clinic committee members and also in the CPF Committee, I'm a, I'm one of them. So, as one of, the first speaker has said, most of the things that I wanted to say. Independent candidates, they don't just come from anywhere, they are from the communities. I'm happy when I look at this Amendment Bill, because mostly most of the things are covered.
To say everything or most of the things are covered?
Yes, but I've noted two things there. As I've said, that community I'm participating and the local government elections, there are processes, LAPA. And those processes, they're giving us opportunities to... They're giving us opportunities like to tell the community what is it that you are busy with if they don't know. But we are deprived of opportunities now. Because my independent candidates, it's not about e-position, but it's about service delivery. So I'm happy, we've been catered as independent candidates. And then what I have seen there? It can be amended is the issue of e-period from moving from a party to maybe if a person is from another party when it is voting to another party. I think because we have, we have processes we are given.
In the processes?
Yes, to present ourselves. If a person is in a party, belongs to a certain party and after the presentation, we are realized that this person is the right candidate for us to choose. Then I think the time is not good. I think it has been, it must be amended. Because if, me, yeah, I'm busy with women and children, which means men, it's not easy for them to know about the things that I'm busy with, the community. But after the presentation, if maybe we are given a month to present and the community must choose the person or nominate the person that will stand for the community for service delivery. If the period doesn't suit them to move from their party, if it is three months, I think the time can be maybe forty-eight hours. So the person can think and realize and digest the things that the person has said and look back if it is true or... Then, the other thing that I've noted on, I think it's page seventeen, the clause of funding. Also, I think independent candidates must be funded like the other parties because it's not, we are not contesting for business sake, but it's for service delivery. I submit.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next.
Greetings.
Department of Home Affairs.
Before we proceed, I would like to... It cannot be right that as parties, we do not have documents. I am not sure if you have looked at that before. Documents by that, I'm referring to ID books? Here so far, my... Since we are here as the community? I reside in Malikutu, that's where I'm from. What did you say? We have children amongst us whom we still need to vote for us next time. But the Department of Social Development? And the Department of Home Affairs? Are not able to assist them to get their IDs. Because their parents are from neighboring countries. So that is actually disadvantaging us because in future, we not show whom will be affected. Over and above that? The department says those children must be in schools. And still they are not able to get the assistance they need since they do not have the IDs. So my take is that it is killing us because of that. I submit to you that you should go back and look into that submission I've just made before you come and say we must use or be in political parties when there are issues with identity documents. I would not like to belabor the point because the speakers before me already alluded to the issues of independent candidates. So my point was that the ID issues must be looked into. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The issues that the gentleman was raising. They are not expressed on the Amendment Bill. But we take note on the issues that is raised. Because we are a team of members of Parliament who serve in different committees. So what we are encouraging is that... We must at least try to focus on this Amendment Bill. If there are issues that are related to our department, our portfolio committee, which are not within the Amendment Bill. Immediately we finish. You then come and raise them with us. So for now, let's just focus on the, so that we don't lose track on the issues that we're dealing with today. Yeah, so that is your plea. Any other issue which is not within the Amendment Bill? Then you can come and raise them after. We have members here, they serve in various committees, social, international. So we will wait for that space when we've concluded. If you have any other matter of the ID. In fact, that matter, we know about it, of the matter that we are raising. So can you identify another set of hands? Number one? Number two? Number three? Number four? Yellow, yeah. Number five? Number six? Number six? Number six, seven? Number eight? Number nine? Number nine?
The lady in front?
And number ten?
And number ten?
Yeah, then we must deal with this and then we'll take another set.
Greetings, everyone.
Yeah, there are others who came late. There are rules that we've announced that we are giving you five minutes to make a submission. So when we stop you, we are going to stop you outside your minutes. So you must appreciate that, that point. Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Sunday Mthetwa. I'm a librarian by profession, a member of the African National Congress. I have a problem with this Amendment. But yes, we support because the Constitutional Court has declared it unconstitutional. But my problem with independents, most of them are angry people. So, one, one will lose at the branch level where we elect, maybe for example councillors then tomorrow, that particular individual say, "I'm an independent now." So another thing, we are an independent, okay, locally is fine. How are we going to deal with it national and provincial? Who are you reporting to? Should it happen that your maker or your ancestors call you? Who's going to replace that particular individual? Because with parties at least, maybe from X decide to leave us in the land of the living, we know that we are going to replace him with Z. So but now with the independent, how are you going to deal with that? How are you going to deal with that with independent? Honestly, I'm hundred percent rejecting it when it comes to national and provincial. But locally, yes, I can agree locally. Because we can check, most of them, how, one speaker has said, "I'm a member of the African National Congress, but I was an independent." Then, I, then it raises question, you cannot contest your father. It raises question, I submit.
Next.
Thank you. Greetings to the House. The name is Nation Temba Mtenjane. I'm a member of the African National Congress and I hail from Ganyama Zane, Ward 21. Firstly, let us welcome the discussion in the House today and thanks the Parliamentary Committee for getting closer to the people to hear our views on this sensitive issue. Firstly, let me reject outrightly the decision.
Sorry, they want, they request you to repeat your name for people's record.
Nation Temba Mtenjane.
Thank you, can proceed.
As I was saying, that I would like to firstly voice my dissatisfaction with the judgment of the Constitutional Court. We accept that the Constitutional Court is the apex court in the land and that we are a constitutional democracy. However, we need to also take into consideration as a constitutional infant democracy that there are many stages that we still need to go through as a democracy for us to reach the ideals of a fully functional democratic state. My problem here is we seem not to be taking into consideration the bread and butter issues on the ground that are affecting our democracy as it stands. Firstly, the expansion of the list for candidacy at a provincial and national level to independent candidates, it's only going to serve as an unnecessary expansion of the ballot paper for these levels. We can see as we stand here in the previous elections that our ballot paper has been ridiculously, been long unnecessarily so. You have a party called KIS today, tomorrow is SOCA, tomorrow is DACHA. And all these parties, they stand just to elevate themselves, individuals appearing on news TV and then diminish and disappear thereafter. So it just seems to that. Another problem that I have is that when you are going to to open a seat like the presidency of a country for an individual, you are going to submit this country to the deepest pockets, to the individuals who have the largest wealth of the country. Individuals who are rich can simply maneuver all over the country, make their points, promise people all sorts of ideals and thereafter, this is going to be a capitalist country. It's going to be for the individuals who are rich, no matter how good your programs or your intentions at a class level. If you cannot compete with a certain business person, automatically if you can't reach a Hermanskraal and Guamchanga and Wackerstrom, how do you expect that people will be able to recognize the objectives, no matter how good or ideal that you are having? So I think it is becoming a scheme for the rich. And in fact, I'm tempted to say our jurisprudence has been off track just a little bit on this one. Although the decisions of the Constitutional Court cannot be challenged, they are the ultimate as far as these issues are concerned. But our judges are also human. We must also expect them to err and to learn from their trials and tribulations. Because our constitution as it stands currently, it caters for direct representation. Because our constitution talks about proportional representation. It says if I'm residing at Ward 21, Ganyama Zane, in the list of my party, a member from Ward 21 or an adjacent ward to whom will be reporting to me and I will be holding account. a member from Ward 21 or an adjacent ward to whom will be reporting to me and I will be holding accountable, will be there automatically. So why do you need a person, an individual, who does not have a base to account to? That person can tomorrow tell us that is going to be residing in Dubai. And what will you do? Run with a motion of no confidence, call by election and so forth. So let us not throw our country into disarray. Actually, this process to me, it seems like a duplicate of what we already have. Our constitution now is intact, that us focus on service delivery and, uh, bringing opportunities to our people. The electoral act is correct as it is, I submit.
Thank you, next.
I'd like to greet the parliament in large. Thank you so much for coming here to reach us and hear what we are going to say today. My name is Michael Dunam Lambo. I'm from Ganyama Zane, Ward 19. I'm a member of the ANC. I would like to submit that if you say we should accept the bill, it will be a problem for us, a very huge one. If a candidate must represent people, it's gonna be hard for the person. We as the community members, we feel this is a game that individuals want to, uh, to make, to, to divide us as the nation. We are led by the seats in the parliament, that how many seats are in the parliament? So now, if we have thousand members of, uh, in the pilot papers, how long will the pilot paper be? Most of the individuals who wants to be individual candidates are the ones that who got hurt in their parties. So if we can nest, uh, individual feelings, we'll have a problem because everyone will, will want to have their own, own parties. Same as the brother who said he's the member of the parliament but also was an individual candidate, is there such a thing though? Uh, if you say, I, I will submit that if you say this bill is correct, I would just request that all the individuals need to be trained that how, how they should treat us as the community. Their equality should aim as leading us.
I, I, I don't know if you are interpreting correct. But I'm saying, I'm trying to say, if you want to be a, a, a person who will be, uh, standing in, in parliament, your qualifying, your qualifying method should be equal to the parties. Not, not as an, as an individual.
If you need to pop up twenty ren as a member and also the party must also pop up the twenty ren so that you can be the member of the parliament. If the, the qualification of being in the parliament is six hu- is six hundred thousand seats, then you, an individual, must pop up the six hundred thousand seats. If this person, if this individual say will represent a person from Lisigisigi or in Mozambique, does he know where that place? So what I'm trying to say is that this bill will not be suitable for us. Yes, in the local government will be good, but national and provincial, it won't work. So those who, who have been hurt, they should wait. If, let's, 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 let's wait for them to be healed. If it means we wait for two years, let them wait for two years, they'll be healed, they'll be fine. Government who nest feelings for people. Thank you so much.
Thank you, next.
Uh, morning everyone.
Uh, morning.
So mene gini lthua, amma independent candidate buti babekona so that we can have the changes. It's because of the dissatisfaction.
Okay, uh, morning everyone. The issue of independent candidate doesn't come anywhere. It just came where people, they were not happy with their leaders, so they decided to be part of the independent candidates. And that person that come up from anywhere, he was chosen, he or she was chosen by the community. So in short, I'm saying we should support them. Let's give them an opportunity as individual candidates. I want to be free.
Uh, your name, your name, uh, Mr., uh, I had Jeffrey, Jeffrey who?
My first one is Buso, B U S O, that is face in English.
My name is Jeffrey Buso from Malagut.
Just relax, pause a bit. Don't be. Don't be all over. We want to respect your submission. We humbly, they are requesting the names where they are, they are recorded. Desmond Moela. So you'll be fair to us and yourself and the people.
So stella uweni njalo now.
What's your name?
Good afternoon everyone. And all our special guests from the parliament. I would also like to thank, uh, for submitting the bill in front of us. We as people, we need to be patient with each other. This doesn't start today. We had two, uh, parties in the parliament, if I'm not lying. And we have given an opportunity and we entered as the ANC and other organizations. And then when we entered the parliament, we know that there was blood that, that has been spitting. So can that not happen today, please? Let us be patient with one another. It also happened in 2008. Uh, with the actions that are happening in a, another party that I will not mention. And there was an organization that was formed in 2008. And they pointed one another in the community. Because they were scared that will take more seats in the parliament. That organization was COU. And it happened that it bring, it, it was burning in the community. In 2012. Another organization was formed again. Those who are independent, they are not safe in the community. And also the IEC. Can you please check the way they hire their employees? Because now we are seeing that teachers are given first priority. We know very well where the teachers, uh, are belonging. It happened not so long in the local government elections. They, uh, sorry? Okay, to the agents that we send them to represent us. They've seen something that the IEC employees are doing. But after the, after election. Because of the, uh, financial cost, we couldn't challenge the, those challenges. For the love of the community, we decided to give them an opportunity to let them lead and see what's gonna happen in future. So today, standing here, I wanna test, testify that I am the one holding the community not to, to strike, not to close the roads. Because those who are saying they are in the big organization. The organization can have, uh, very good rules and regulations, but their members, they cannot, uh, control their people. Can you please, when you go back to the parliament, please, uh, submit those issues that we are having here? Especially in safety. And, and the IEC officials. Thank you, we, I request that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Sebonga, next.
Greetings everyone and also greet the leaders. I don't agree with the bill that is in front of me. With certain reasons. If you can check, I, as an individual who will represent someone from Witbank, uh, sorry, from national and provincial, I am staying here in Ganyama Zane, I'll have to represent someone from Witbank, that person that I don't even know. And if you can check, we'll have a problem when, if the, if those individuals will have to come back and give us feedback, how will they account? As we speak, uh, we have huge problems, for example, an ID issue. We have, um, people who have, uh, South African citizenship, but his, he, his ID has been blocked. Which means we can have a fake president who has a fake ID in South Africa. Because that person wants to be a president and you find that most of the people here, their IDs are blocked and you see that this is a problem. And also, we have a problem that these people, if they want to lead us, uh, the regulations are saying. For example. If I want a certain place. They will say, "I will need fifty signatures." Of which is, it is easy to get those, uh, signatures. Because, uh, I have money to buy these people with their signatures because it is easy to buy them. If it happens that this bill is being approved. We need to have a firm law to these people. If he wants to represent people to the parliament. They needs to have a certain number that shows how many people he or she has. Same goes with the money, it needs. Greetings everyone. And all protocol observed.
Our submission because we are from stakeholders, as Epinar. We are from Epinar, Kamsoquaba.
We are from Epinar, we are from Pinari in Kamsoquaba.
Our submission is that all the independent candidates who wants to contest must fall under certain national structures in line with Schedule 1A and Schedule 1 and Schedule 1A in terms of registration, qualification and so forth. And therefore, we feel that all those independent structures who want to participate on the election processes must also undergo the screening processes in terms of, uh, police clearance or criminal records. Because we experienced a number of cases whereby people just go for the sake of enriching themselves while they are criminals. Then, as a stakeholder, taxi association, CPF's, national school governing bodies and other national structures must indicate or elect a person, a cer- certain person who will represent them, but following all the processes. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Greetings everyone. My name is Given. My name is Given Moriri. From Ward 37. From Watetse Seven.
Benkele gushoguti labavima independent. Basuka lagula, basuka kona lag A N C.
I would like to say those.
Neti ngoba, basuka banigwa, babona gogutikunema leader etu la impumalanga, la funagogutigonge gube gua.
I would like to say those individuals who are independent, they are from the ANC organization, just that they see that there are leaders who are.
So, uma babeke goguti weina, gufuna ulide maybe ubel cancer la gumbu ube yini.
So if they've seen that they've chosen you to be a cancer or something.
Sektholaga lakutao sawi. Batibona.
They see that you don't do something, they feel.
Ngono uvulile kimbula gube intimbe independent stock support.
They feel that you need to be an independent individual and they will support you.
Gunga goksugamsi ndo laguva utu akon.
That's why they fight where they are voting.
Enenyakabanga gugutsinjenabolaboputina buseslawa kulumilela.
And I also think, as the brothers and sisters have said already.
Gufuna uvotelu e banila banin.
You need to be voted by many people.
Utovotelu angbanwe nuiwan.
Who will vote for you when you are alone?
Gusho ngalamanymaka ma usuka kona laglin shlangano yetu.
Which means we are from our organization.
Unga gunnamlalomunya uti akzayindi A N C.
That's why one will say this is no longer an A N C.
African National Congress.
An African National Congress.
Senubula baba bat African National Corruption.
That's why they are saying this is an African National Corruption.
Because abakon lukwina.
Because they are unable to win.
So denyalutine.
So now we.
Siti abapataali.
We are saying they need to pay.
Jongo ba putabe kisilatsi, uma e Parliament upatalo a seven hundred thousand.
Like the brother already said, if in Parliament you are paying seven thousand.
Na wege humbo pataali.
You also as an individual, you need to pay the seven thousand rand.
Utobona mpatsi ngenge salwa na baba na yode.
You will see, we will never fight with them again because they don't have such money.
So benkele gushoguti lokusiktelela.
So I would say, whatever that we came in here for.
Sitelueti ndoto guti, gufuna sibemu ye.
We are here to be united.
Ungati kiipigusho waput atse angeke uvugele babawo.
Do not be left out because you will never stand up for your father.
So nyabonga gutsinfigile nammla.
Thank you so much for coming here.
Ntoslungseela.
To fix for us.
Angishogutse pasese nyabonga.
I am not saying you should pass the bill though.
Thank you, next.
One, two. Eh nyabengelele.
Greetings everyone.
My name is Bongani. Mathebulakalanga Baloi, from Tsigazi region, located in Bombela, Watuan. Thanks for the opportunity and the time given to me. As a young leader, I'm very much privileged to be here today to also put my input as one of the South African citizen. Before I go further, let me just give a homework to the staff of the Parliament. Let us just zoom straight to the Amendment Section One of seventy-three nineteen ninety-eight. There's a description, a description. Well-described candidate, jumping constitution, well-described independent candidate. But I have a problem with the description of constitution. Whereby it says it means Constitution of Republic of South Africa nineteen ninety-six, it's not a description for us who are learning, who are not schooling. They must describe fully what is the constitution, thank you. Also let me just run and zoom straight to the intersection of Part Three, in Chapter Three. In Act Seventy-three of nineteen ninety-eight. Eh, I think it's paragraph, I've never done though, but I think it's paragraph eh, A. Lana ikuluma ngugu si.
Here it says.
Kumele gube nemniaga cite. Kumele gube nebandu cite labatau sayina nobatau kigilela, ema signature ago.
You need to have certain years and you need to have people, a number of people to sign their signatures.
For the independent candidate. So, a humble request, as a leader from the African National Congress. For the Parliament to avoid tax who normally call other tax. The one who have divorced the other party and think that they are greater leaders, they are challenged, they are invited by their communities to present them. Those signatures, it must be clear on this. It must be made public also to the African National Congress. And if we check and find those ID numbers and the signature valid, that candidate is dismissed. Because, angekumfugele babawo, like the last speaker.
You will never stand up for your father like the last speaker said.
Let us also run and zoom straight to Paragraph F. Colleagues, Congress and leaders, we all know, it's obvious, there's an upcoming local government election. If I'm not mistaken, maybe in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. I know myself that I want to divorce African National Congress, my community loves me, I'm a good leader, I won't do corruption. I fully subscribe to the requirements of this bill, I'm residing in that world and I know that twenty twenty-seven is coming. I must start now to prepare and lobby my people for twenty twenty-seven. So it doesn't talk meta-medical when it says at least three months, that member, the independent candidate must not be part of any political party, at least three months, at least. It means if I get angry now with this mandimuela, tomorrow I can be an independent cancer like you have fear yourself, colleagues, that some of them, they said I'm a member of African National Congress and I'm also an independent, oh. What an openness. It must be clear to say, if you want to qualify to be an independent cancer. I'm talking locally now, locally government, at least you must have fully three years on this bill, not three months, not twelve months, three years because I start now for twenty twenty-seven. If I'm not a dark, a person who can get angry today and want to be independent tomorrow, he is a dark. He is an angry child from the far.
Yeah, I must work towards closing.
Let me just use sixty second. And you must also not confuse independent candidate and political parties. I fear a lot of speakers saying, tinslangano, they were hot in these years and they became hot in these years. And independent is an independent person, this is not practical. I can die now with a car accident leaving here to home, as an independent candidate representing Umala, who will replace me. Because I don't represent, I don't form part of any political party. I think Parliament, because we won't argue with the constitutional courses, it's the last highest court of appeal. So they should have leave everything, if I'm angry, I must open a political party with those fees, everything. And comrades, colleagues, there's no amount of money from the government that is funding political parties. If you are from South Africa, you watch Parliament, you are fear that all political parties, they've declared their funders and sponsors. So anyone must not say, we must create the equal amount from the one that is getting by the ANC, eh, baba wabereka mo, we at seven dayla, you get your own amount.
We are waiting.
You must fund yourself, so the amount must be equally. I fully support independent candidates locally, provincially and nationally. We cannot allow group chats to get ID from Department of Foreign Affairs and come back and lead our country. Never and never, still, when we are still alive as young leaders, we won't allow that. We must allow them locally because they are residing in that world.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's not characterize independent as tax.
Agesina shobisi ema emalunga la timele, jenge mastaz.
Yeah, let's not go to that extent because.
Si. Sorry, Chair.
I'm appealing that let's not characterize society where you don't have evidence.
Si singa fagi ema memba, singa nabu umgnama e imparatine.
Because throughout with independent candidates that participate in local government.
Ngoba yonge insa osna o ema emalunga la 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 ngenelile ezema individuals.
So raise your point in line with what the consul court has directed us to do.
Sela ufagi imbonawa kogunlapo le bili ishogutisi wendi.
Yeah, we're just making that appeal so that we don't have.
Sitela siyatela rakul.
Next.
Next, Roland Zela.
Okay, thank you Chair. My ma, oh, my name is Meilubambo from Gwanyama Zani, I greet you all in Wat Twenty-One. Hmm, siabonga rakul, ku Parliament kutitela gitisi balalali.
Thank you so much for the Parliament to come here as to us, to the community.
Itos tulela le bili, jongo ba itu lanammla. We really appreciate it. Hmm, umangi ngenala insabeni ema independent candidate. I really, nyaba vela pluungu, because abakafiga ngakule decision dabaitete begumnanzi.
If I look at the issue of the independent candidate, I feel sorry for them because they did not take the decision easily.
But angeke uteka ya uma gnengi nga, besa uyachuta ekailako. Utisaida kutuyotlala kama kelwane gobe ekailako gnengi nga lungi, so whatever challenges that you have in your own house.
But you can never go out of your house whenever you have problems, you need to fix your problems first.
It is really challenging, guti eh, an independent, angatime la even guma locally, I can hear some of eh, lalesmakulumile ma colleagues wetu, laseka kulumile, ayashoguti locally it's fine, but not nationally. I won't say it is fine locally because even locally, where are you going to account? Uma so wenda tingi nga lagu locally, uyoka untagupi, ene guatsi nesbalalali. Ngupi lakfanele siyoko nasyo kalako, nasukalele weina, jongo ba uyindependent, gungene kola sto ya konage ukala na.
If, if as an individual, we are having some challenges, where are you going to account? And we as the community, when we are having problems with you, where are we going to report you as an individual?
Ngipinsa futingbuya, ngisigu inga rakulu, gule gulama independent. Ngutse lae South Africa, senebanila banin gakule sibabiya ngapandla.
And also, I would say it is a problem to the individuals because we have, here in South Africa, we have a lot of people who are from the neighboring countries.
I'm sorry to call them a opportunist, bete lae South Africa, guse bato ti enricha bona.
I'm sorry to say they are opportunist, but they are here in South Africa to enrich themselves.
Good, elabakbugile logulenge South Africa, instead babwektotata babume baham.
There's nothing good they are looking in South Africa, but instead they are here to take our things and go back to their countries.
E agutlunga kulu e vendakis e South Africa, uma sibona wendega ngalenzila, lo wendega ngayo ektseni. E South Africa, iyali impagungnyalo, imengelnya olinyes, ketsesinesto iketsis.
It is so sad to see how our country is doing. Already the country is limping and now we, as the people of the South Africa, we are making it worse.
Lomseto le skuluma ngawonyalo, utekto bulala e South Africa, uyayidestoya eto.
This bill we are talking about now is destroying our country.
Nyigusho logo ngoba, eh, uma kutiwa umundu lok, uyindependent, iyose, inga, ivumelegele ne guti, ingaze iben president wa gle country, lishalakuwe.
I am saying this because it says the individual candidate might be a president of this country.
Hmm, I'm, shangati, I'm sorry ma comrade, okay. So inginga lekona, umangshojalungisma jena, umundu lokamka ngapandla, angabang president o lae South Africa.
What I'm saying is, a foreigner might come in our country and become a president of this country.
Pela kutengega imali, kutigwendegi logo, ene labanda bakamka ngapandla, banemali ngendela, yu guti bangas te ngatinella, kutibange ne babe bos, bo president balae South Africa, but sia pinale country na.
In this regard, money is needed for being a candidate and these people, they have money, foreigners have money, they can even buy us. So where are we going as a country?
Gutslunga kulu, gwendega gusia, kela guslo mseto aubuyege tu e gakul.
It is so sad, I feel this bill needs to be, to be reconsidered.
Ngivelabanyebetu bakulu malana, baba labobo boza wetu, yes, bakulumega mnanzi, bangsatale ne makamemlo ye ni.
I've heard our brothers and sisters speaking already, they even took my words out of my mouth.
But lesikela go, nguti logle sikela go, sibasalba seto South Africa, sela gusnik implement, ene ni implemente logle sikeli letine.
But what we are requesting is that you need to implement what we have requested.
Imali ilbulalele livelitu.
Money has killed our country.
Ngalo gungshogutse siyakela, guti logle sikresentago gininyalo, guti angegesim vumele mundu angapandla, angegesim vumele i independent, ibe i president yale country. Gushoguti i country siyabala eto.
In short, we'll never allow an independent candidate to be a president of the country because we are killing our country.
I submit.
I submit, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Nyabonga Chair. Nyabonga Chairman, kama ngimimpanafuti wakanjlovu.
Thank you Chairman, my name is Panafuti Njlovu.
Ngipumaga Nyamazani, e Wat Twenty.
I'm from Gwanyama Zani, Wat Twenty.
Ngililunga le ANC Youth League.
I'm a member of the ANC Youth League.
Eh, greetings to all, in the blood and soul of Solomon Kalushimalangu. Whose blood has nourished the trees of our freedom. I thank you. Eh, my first submission to you Chair is that I support the current electoral system that we are using, which is the PR-based system. And my second submission is that if or when the bill has been amended, it must include a clause that will seek to protect the participation of young people in both political parties and independent candidates who are going to be sitting in our Parliaments. Why such a submission Chair? As young people, we are the majority and the future of this country. As the born free generation of this country, we have our own revolution. And our revolution is economical transformation in our lifetime. So if and when young people are represented in both provincial and national legislature, the attainment of our revolution is at our fingertips. I thank you very much Chair, young people to the forefront of change, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your submissions, we are going to identify a set of hands.
Siabonga gakul, gubabangelen gushida, stovu, buyefutis ketelu, sulit tanzha.
Let me also acknowledge our Deputy Minister, Ming Kadime.
Ngitanza gakulu, bukulu, bukona baku my Deputy Minister, Madeng Kadime.
Who joined us to observe our advice from the meeting with the dysfunctional municipalities.
Eh, loto, lokona, loktopu gakutimislangano wetu hambanjani, ngayogo kutile mini mislangano, ibane gunga hampiga, Ashif.
Thank you for observing this process.
Nyabonga gakul, gokutube kona, glomshlangano wetu.
We'll start there, number one.
Staukala lapa emova, uekala.
We'll go there, number two.
Wesbili nangali.
Number three.
Westadfu.
Number four, umama.
Wesilengmagenale emova.
Yeah, mama number four, yes. Number five.
Num, wes slanu.
Number six.
Wes fupa.
Eh... I'm looking for number seven, eight and ten, nine and ten. So we have many, we have six.
So, sile, tanza, le distfupa kpe la.
Okay. Yeah, number seven.
Wes kombisa.
Number eight. Joinalapia, bab. Number eight.
Was pochungu.
The gentleman is raising his hands, eh, yeah.
Babe, upara misesanza ngalapo?
Yeah, I think we are done.
Niakaba ngasekpe len.
You can start.
Ngakala bab.
Yeah, 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 thank you very much. Eh, my name is Pazamisa Mate, eh, the Regional Testing Coordinator of the African National Congress here at the Tanzania region. Might take this opportunity to welcome our Minister, Ummamukadime, and also all our stakeholders who are part of us in here. Thank you very much for being part of this process. Critically to all matters of which I mean our comrades have raised here, the first thing of which I wanted to raise to this sitting today is that each and every one of us must be very, very much patient and be cool. Because really, if and only if you understand where we are coming from, as South Africans, we are raising this, we are going to raise these matters on the basis that some of us, we need to understand, or we understand ourselves, where we are coming from, where are we and where are we going to? And where do we want to go to and what is it that we want to achieve by this government, which is being led by the African National Congress? And I wanted to say openly and straightforward that you are proud of the African National Congress, as it is leading this government. What an African National Congress of hundred and ten years, and you have got twenty-five years and today you want to say this and this must happen? Meanwhile, you didn't participate in all the processes whereby this organization was fighting for the liberation of this country. Everything and anything which is happening today is not because of your wishes, but it is because of those who sacrificed their lives, their times, and everything of which they did have for the liberation of this country. And today, you wanted a minority to lead this country. And I wanted to say openly and honestly to all our comrades, you are making a mistake comrades. Irrespective of your democratic rights, you are making a very big mistake, because you are angry. And when we want to lead this revolution, we must not be angry. I'm raising this because we are from the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one local government elections, and we have won all our municipalities here at the Tanzania, five of them. Because of the voters, the poor and the working class, the motive forces, who are expecting the African National Congress to provide them with their sev- I mean with services. The ANC has committed itself, informed by the Freedom Charter of nineteen fifty-five, which today is the NDP twenty thirty, and you need to respond to all those promises, commitments of which you have made to our people, and today, you don't even have great wealth, but you want to become an independent and lead us. It is because you are angry. We need, we need not, we don't need people who are angry here. We need people who exactly understand as to what is it that we need to do, where do we want to take this country to? This is the position of the African National Congress. Number one, that we, as the ANC, we support the PR system, that is proportional representation, on the following basis. I will request comrades Chair to give me the full five minutes. I'm presenting on behalf of the ANC now.
Eh, let me guide.
The ANC supports the PR system.
Hold on. We are not allocating minutes on the basis of individuals, political parties, or any other NGOs.
Asigupi umzuzu, longulungslanu, ngoba, u, kamgagleni organization, gumbenjani.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me continue.
No, no, I will tell you to continue.
Okay.
And when you come to the podium, you start with the preamble outside the bill. You must count those minutes as five in the main.
Uma utanga pambili, funa u, uwa, tutugoku, unemi zuzule, nsanu, ukala kbalu, uma ukala kuluma.
So all members who are going to, eh, submit are going to be treated fairly with the minutes, and we have now exhausted some of the minutes and...
Ongue ema lunga lete, to thula lana, adobe anige, imi zuzule, linganagwa, atau.
Only allowing you on the minutes that are left for your space, then I will stop you.
Ndogupale mi zuzule, salele we, nakpe.
Thank you.
Niabong.
Yeah, thank you Chairperson. In terms of my, 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 my cellphone, I'm left with three minutes. Let me continue. The first one was saying as the African National Congress, we support the proportional representation system on the following basis. The ANC has always supported a proportional representation system as it is best suited to a country as diverse as ours, in terms of race, in terms of class, and in terms of language. It ensures that every political viewpoint shared by more than one quarter of one percent of the population is able to find representation in parliament and speaks on behalf of that constituency. We have never supported a first past the post constituency system, as it is very difficult to reach the same level of diverse representation.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Siya bong.
Next?
Comrade Chair, I don't, I don't think that I've completed my five minutes. I, I don't think I've completed my five minutes.
Thank you.
Please, I don't think that I've completed my five minutes.
Thank you Puti, thank you.
Siya bong Aputi.
Next?
Rolanzela.
Chairperson, I don't, I don't think that I've completed my five minutes. If you can count all your watches. No, I didn't complete my five minutes. Comrades, let us be honest to this process. I didn't complete my five minutes. I didn't.
Next?
Rolanzela.
Comrades, I didn't complete my five minutes. I want to read exactly what we, was our viewers there in C. Please. No, no, cool yourself down. No, I didn't complete my five minutes.
Let's, let's understand each other.
I guess vissi san.
Let's understand each other.
Tela vissi san.
Can, can, eh, can you, don't disrupt the, the podium. Can the speaker who has made this point, I cautioned that you, you, if you start with, eh, preambles, that preamble is part of your minutes.
Mshilo, go, kutu, uma ukala nga, lo gune, lo, lo kala nga, go, u, u part, we are five minutes wa.
When you come to the Amendment Bill,
Umaso utagle, gule bili, glomshet.
On the minutes you have been allocated, we don't start there. You have collapsed your minutes.
Ubeso, uachatile, ema, emi zuzuya, kulisigune geteyon.
This committee, we are not going to categorize which political party must get more minutes and not.
Jengoba angshilo, kuti ngai, tesaniga, ema, oka, eh, tinshanganu, ema minutes, la tite.
And I've ruled on that. I'm not going to shift to that ruling.
Besen shilo, futu bu logo.
Thank you. Next?
Niabonga, Rolanzela.
Comrade Chair, please, nklala, nklala raise, nfunakba honest to this lookzana process.
No, no.
Even three minutes, angabang kulu, me gule process. I'm honest.
No, no, no.
If u akona, loganelu wash, agalprove, umaga akona.
If, mamela, mamela.
Because I wanted to, the second point was the problematic of the long pilot system.
No, no chief, no, no chief.
Comrades, no, 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 no.
No, no chief.
No, this time, this time, this time is, is...
No, no chief.
Okay, checka, ma minutes akugutati.
No, no, no chief.
Counter ma minutes.
No, no, eh, eh, in that, in that. ANC, I, I understand you are a member of ANC.
Niab, vissi sa, ulm, ulunga le, le shanganu ANC.
If, if, mamela, eh, eh, aso so anando, don't undermine us.
Listen Baba.
Don't undermine us. Don't undermine the... Don't undermine this committee.
Stela, unatele, le, 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 committee.
Nklala, nklala, no, sit down, sit down. No, sit down, sit down. No, sit down. We are in charge here in control. Don't make a mistake. This committee, you are in charge and in control.
Le committee sipete futi siya, siya laula.
Can I request you to sit down?
Nklala, ulta le pas, bab.
Unless the ANC want to disrupt this meeting.
Ngapani, goku, kuti, i, i ANC, ifuna kupaza, mister, glomshanganu.
No, 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 no. Unless, unless, unless you want to disrupt this meeting.
Ngapani, goku, kuti.
Bamanan Puti. No, 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 no. Sit down.
Kaba, basala pas.
Eh, let's address two issues.
I guess lungi sena, gugu bili.
Nklala, nklala, I'll be right.
Can you please sit down?
Eh, members of the community.
Malunga emparatine.
We outlined when we started the process.
Si shiro, umastala glomshanganu.
And is the process throughout the country and parliament you are using.
And we indole, si sebendisago, e parliament na, yo yonginsago.
So I want to assure you that there is no political party.
Mfuna, gundisegisago, kuti, gude, insanganu, yeh politik.
Or an NGO, an individual, in all the meetings throughout the country.
Ngisho i NGO, no ma, in, umundulotimele, gulo, ulongele live.
That are going to exert authority outside ourselves, yeah.
Labanemansha, gundula, ngapani wetu lan.
We are here to listen to members and we are respecting you.
Si la, na aktolalela, endesi anshoni pa.
And people who have started already, they understood how this protest, protest, protest is, is, is started.
Banu bakalile bayavissisa, goku, kuti, ne, lo, lokamba, gualense, lokamba njani.
So those who are here, don't take advantage, that would disrespect this process.
Laba, laba, la, naskela, goku, unatsasilfuba, ufune, gus, shangan, shanganisago, glomshangan.
We don't appreciate how the ANC person who introduced himself, how he conducted himself.
Asaktan, lo, lilunga le ANC, lilka ta guguwenda nyalo.
To these members of the committee.
Gulo, gula ma lunga, emparatine.
I repeat, we are going to be firm.
Niapinza futu stopkini sa.
And not going to be ambiguous on how this process.
Angege futu nje si chige, goku, kuti, sambanjani, ngalulhle.
We don't, whether you want to intimidate this committee or not.
No ma bangatu, ufuna, gusabisa, le, le committee, no manjani.
We have clarity of authority, yeah.
Sin, eh, ma lungelo, le, le funa suwende la, na, tinajenge committee.
Thank you. Next?
Niabonga, Rolanzela.
Astulo Libito Lakake Natsidi, so, wagamakuvedu, Abushbagrich, ki regional coordinator ya Sangko.
I thank you Chairperson. Eh, my name is, uh, Sepiso Makuvedu from...
Tidiso.
Oh, Tidiso Makuvedu from Abushbagrich, and I'm also a member of Sangko.
Ki, ki rata olle wagamaloko, a portfolio committee.
I would like to thank the portfolio committee members.
For conducting this research. Ki rata rapego tuelapili, ki re re le ba judi, babu xavela.
I would also like to, uh, proceed and say that as the residents of Poshabela.
Re le ba judi ba Mpumalanga.
As the residents of Mpumalanga.
Rata otega African National Congress.
Who would like to support the ANC.
Gadi proposal, si baseting badidi rile.
With the proposals that they have already made.
Re re, gorohonogo yaga.
I'm saying that, uh, for us to be able to build.
A very vibrant parliament. A parliament that represents the people of South Africa. Those are the issues that we should address. Khre re, nyaka gore, musho arnaibe, musho acholopile.
When we want our government to be progressive.
Ki rata rapego lebo, rape de Constitutional Court.
I would also like to thank the Constitutional Court.
Ke ilea kona, guchwela cha, yonadis bill to be gore, ki, ki mulao, oi lungore, resantorule la latele, re, le, 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 mehwaya, gus, sipidi shu, ya, wana.
For having, uh, made this bill to be the one that we should comply with, as well as, uh, its, uh, procedures.
Ibe, isiposhu, re, re Constitutional Court, ir mulao, o, 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 se mulao, sipidi shu, ise, ibe ise mulao.
It wasn't by mistake, uh, when the Constitutional Court said that, uh, this, uh, bill is unconstitutional.
Motewo was, motewo, mulao, te was sipidi shu, ya di cheto, ore?
Uh, the Electoral Act, Act says.
Motu, u dumele, motu, molo, mo, u dumele, giro cheta, lo, chetwa, bi aloka, mu yeme.
Every person is allowed to choose and also to be chosen as a representative.
So run a really Sangko, really, mo, 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 hadwa, ba judi.
Now, ourselves as Sangko, being the residence organization.
Re remo ho paramente.
We say to the parliament.
Ayie le shoko, the Chichinyocha African National Congress.
It should take into consideration.
Thank you.
The proposals by the ANC.
Next.
Eh, program director, dumelala, ki ratahela.
Greetings.
Na, ki na, banyadi jengi finia mshala.
Banyadi jengi man?
Banyadi jengi finia mshala.
My name is Banyadi Jengi Finia Mshala.
Ki, wa, guluwa, maspale, watabachou, from Wat 8.
I'm from Tabachou municipality, in Wat 8.
Some of them, let us be sober.
The first thing that I would like to ask is that, let us be sober.
Ki, le, go, ri, ma, loka, parliament, ki, chori, tisha, tya, malau, or, amendiwe.
And I would also like to thank the parliament, uh, members, for having brought this bill to us, for it to be amended.
Ki, wa, ni, chim, sarama ra, pa, gor, malau, ki, malau.
It should show that law is law.
Re, amenda, re, sa, kelela, malau, ori, le ba judi, ki, le, yo, mu, wa, balim, wa, na, kuwa, maspale.
Uh, we are happy for this law and we would like to amend it, amend it.
Rsalva, la, pi, program director, or, mo, ki, South Africa, repelanaganya, democracy.
We shouldn't forget that we live in South Africa, which is a land of democracy.
Re, independent, di, lo, na, di chaveng, di, cheta, ki, ba, judi, mo, gak, olivelela, or, na, ba, toba, di rela, si, basu, shoka.
When independents are available, they are elected by the residents, with the confidence that they will do what the residents need.
Ki, wa, au, karri, re, sa, ka, sa, ka, na, go, pala, angor, ru, tech, malau, gar, re, malau, di, re, lu, wa, na, go, swana, wa, hona, go, ro, ka, we change.
Now, what is it that is preventing us from going ahead with this bill, because if it is not well, it is also possible for us to can amend it.
Ki, wa, re, sa, ka, sa, ka, na, re, na, ba, toba, akounta, ka, ya, gal, akounta, ka, ya, ki, akounta, si, chavi.
I can hear that we are getting confused, we are asking ourselves that where are we going to account to? Where else we can account to the residents?
Re, sa, kelela, malau, or, kam, ka, di, independent, di, jona, di, 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 le, ma, loka, ro, swana, le, di, political parties, ki, ba, judi, wa, chet, ilikas, chava, savana, ki, le, go, ramarama ra.
We.
Thank you, next.
We are very happy about this bill, we, we say that the independent candidates should be given an opportunity as well, because they are also residents and they are chosen by the masses. I thank you.
Dumelan, kam, kalaen.
Greetings.
I'm Gravin Mayle.
My name is Gravin Mayle.
Ki, wa, gashabinsa, ma, TV, ka, maspale, watabachou, ka, ra, Wat 8.
Who's your guy?
Ka, ma TV.
I'm from Ma TV.
Ga, ka, maspale, watabachou.
Uh, under the Tabachou municipality.
Wa, Wat 8.
In Wat 8.
Ki, mo, ki, si, motwa, wa, pati, wa.
I am not affiliated to any political party.
Ki, te, mo, to, support, uh, believe, in, chant for independent candidates.
I'm here to support, uh, the bill, especially pertaining to independent candidates.
Ga, or, in, twiki, boning, gamashwaka, kana, ki, elektar, independent, eh, candidate for, for maspale, Wat 8, for, for councilor. Ba, judi, le, di, meeti, ni, si, chak, re, li, tal, tal, le, member, chali, na, chapi, then, agno, go, le, la, kayo, then, si, chava, sa, cheta, ba, bona, then, moa, ask, chavi, motwa, mo, hiti, le, en, foschaw, basamra.
Uh, what I have witnessed with my eyes is that.
Okay, ki, ki, boni, gar, cheta, di, councilor, for di, eh, foschaw, agir.
When, uh, councillors were chosen for the residents.
Yes. Agno, go, le, la, ka, di, party, ile, at, al, wa, ta, yo, na, agir, ba, wa, hiti, le, si, chava, sa, savara.
The political party came with its candidates, but, uh, the residents did not like them.
So, ba, chusa, ba, bona.
They then chose their own.
Eh, after, ba, chusa, ba, bona, awi, na, agir, then, re, di, apilo, ba, bona, asa, chalale, si, chonan, mo, tomu.
Now, after they chose their own candidate, that candidate won, but after a while, they could no longer see their candidate, they started seeing someone else.
Then, ma, decide, or, no, aram, hiti, aram, support, then, have independent candidates.
Now, they then decided that since we chose this particular individual, let us, uh, make him to be a, an independent candidate.
And we support, di, financially, gar, re, or, early campaign, over, ga, chale, de, ki, de, transport, de, ki, di, ju, we support, di, la, go, na.
They supported him financially, because whenever there is a campaign, there's a need for financial assistance as well as food.
Eh, ilga, sa, honu, o, ina, kam, ho, uh, eh, sandura, fish, go, na, Mara, o, il, ah, cha, di, vote, di, ina, unfortunately, because, wa, sa, honu, wa, la, ka, PR, or, go, go, then, o, fe, le, ga, na, go.
Uh, the candidate did not win, because, uh, but, uh, he might need to get a number of votes, but unfortunately, he couldn't even become a, a PR councillor.
So, wa, ta, ha, yet, abe, wa, support, we support them, re, ho, pal, re, le, wa, support, eh, even if, financially, you can, eh, lis, if, di, bay, bu, le, tya, nyama, tomu, la, guy, di, ra.
We, uh, do support, eh, independent candidates and we would ask you to also do the same, and if you can support them financially, please do so.
Re, ta, bi, sheta, because, kam, ho, ram, moning, ak, ra, di, vote, then, go, ta, ta, bi, so, re, ta, because, re, ta, swor, wa, ta, honu, chalapile, le, go.
We are very much happy with that issue, and, uh, whenever they receive votes, we get excited.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would leave it at that, I thank you.
Next.
Niabong, Chairperson.
Thank you Chairperson.
Firstly, you know, tell them, you, Carla, raise your order in the manner you behave.
Firstly, I'd like to raise my concern or complaint in the manner in which you handled, eh, the situation earlier.
The whole point of us coming here, Chairperson, is to raise our views, go, ti, si, ni, corner, go, si, va, and take them into serious consideration, of which, if ever, obona, ngati, go, ba, con, I, mistake, I, ba, con, there's no need, go, tu, eh, na, you can portray how powerful you are in the front, this, eh, I will allow, otherwise, you need to have a mechanism in place, go, go, tu, eh, na, jan, whenever, eh, go, ba, na, mu, lo, eh, na, you can portray.
How do you then handle?
Ngoba, la, si, de, to, raise, our views, eh, Chairperson.
Because we are here to raise our view.
Because those people I call my friends actually put money or they invest a lot to those independent candidates because there is an interest they are pushing. And also the disgruntled members of our organizations. They then cause factions and go and be independent candidates. South Africa should not be controlled by an angry person. What I'm saying is that I am totally opposed to the bill.
Thank you, next.
Thank you very much and greetings to you Chair and your entourage. My name is Siposuwela, I'm the Chairperson of the SACP in the Philip Haidari district. What we want to indicate as a Communist Party is that we don't support the current bill as it is proposed. We feel that it's going to create serious chaos in the country. You see, as much as we support democracy, we support freedom of association and all what it goes with. The bill as it is indicated currently is going to create chaos in our communities. It's going to create problems in terms of voting and running an election. Because if you have got independence, as it is researched by this bill, it means you'll have many people who will be in your ballot paper. And that for the majority who are unemployed, who don't have all these sophisticated issues that those who support this bill have, is going to be a nightmare for them. So we are saying that in terms of voting patterns and voting itself is going to be complicated. But we also understand that this bill in its own, it seeks to undermine the implementation of the national democratic revolution. Why do I say this? In the current political trends, what those who are supporting this bill, they want to make sure that they reduce the majority of the ANC. And there's no other organization in the country that can be able to deal with the current challenges, except the ANC as it invests in the national democratic revolution. So as the party therefore, we are not supporting that. We feel that it creates a lot of chaos and our proposal is that then for us as a country to deal with the coastal court order, we need to make sure that we support option one that is presented by the Ministerial Advisor. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Thank you Chairperson. My name is Muzingwenya. I'm from the African National Congress. I am from Wat 6 in Mombela. Before I continue with my submission, I would like to make this request to say it's very important in meetings such as this one to say all of us as we are gathered here must be able to contain ourselves. And also to say to you Chairperson, you have a great responsibility to run this meeting in a professional manner. I also think you are a member of parliament, which means we have to learn a lot from you. So it actually puzzled me. I was convinced that you are running the meeting in a professional manner. But you were so impatient. I'm not sure why. I heard you saying more like the ANC is trying to disrupt the meeting.
There's no disruption here.
There is not disruption. We are still all seated. We are all still listening to what people are saying. There's no one I've saw trying to throw chairs around. For you two can say the ANC wants to disrupt the meeting. We as the African National Congress are committed to this entire process. As such Chairperson, I would request to say as you proceed with meetings such as this, wherever you are going, you must at least have a bit of patience. Chairperson, as a member of the African National Congress, the bill that is being proposed or amended, we do not support it. Because there is a challenge of managerial issues which might give us problems in terms of governing the country. As we are talking now to say a person is independent, what are they independent from? As it has been mentioned earlier to say the biggest issue here might be the question of accountability. My submission also would be to say another issue will be the question of mandate. Because if it happens for an independent candidate to be in parliament, let's say for example parliament now must take decisions. So how is the independent candidate going to make sure that the decisions that are taken there are representing the community? This bill will not be able to assist us. We are of the view that the proportional representation system is the correct one. Because if you look at it, it is also able to accommodate even smaller parties. Even parties that are existent in one province or they don't exist in another province. This bill will not help us. I thank you Chairperson.
Thank you very much for your contributions. I must affirm to this meeting, reaffirm that we are not arrogant and exercising wrong power. The earlier decision I communicated stands. The earlier decision we took stands is how we run the proceedings of parliament. So that we are fair to ourselves and everyone. So we are not moving, we stand with that item, with that decision. I'm going to request if there's any other hands, we are patient and we're patient with everyone. Until all of us have contributed. I'm going to start with you Mamala, the first one. Is there any this one? The third one. Is there any other hand before I take that one? Is there any other hand before I take that one? Remember you spoke first, I want to allow those that didn't talk first. None. Is there understanding that there's no any other person who want to make input before we give that gentleman another opportunity? Is that an understanding colleagues? There's no any other hands and after this line, we are going to conclude the meeting. So there's understanding that there's no any other hand. Yes, the ANC, I'm repeating you because you introduced yourself as ANC. Just join, you raise your hands, just join on the line. Okay, no, they satisfied with the issues. So these are our last team that are going to present. But if there's anyone after, if you have another thought after this one, must raise your hand.
Greetings. My name is Cynthia Nkomo. I'm from the Nkomas Municipality from Wat 8. Wat 30. And I was one of the independent candidates. I was glad when I was invited to come to this session today. Firstly, I would like to say to parliament that we wish for this bill to be amended. To be amended so that the community that we are from can also be assisted. We are very frustrated as the community. I feel that this bill will be our road to freedom because when you become an independent candidate, you are nominated by the community. I was affiliated with certain party. My party was very good. The problem is the constitution. The problem is that the constitution has problems that end up affecting the community in their province. That's why the community decided that let's be, stand as independent candidates so that we can see if we are, we cannot bring about change. So I can see that this bill is bringing change. I fully support the amendment of the bill, thank you.
Thank you, next.
I thank you Chairperson. My name is Priscilla Sisabella and I'm from Wat 25 in Mombela. I was seated there listening to members speaking here and I thought to myself, let me stand up and just conclude the whole matter. I am aware that we are here and we are free and it's been long since we haven't been using our rights correctly. Because this bill is written and there could not be a situation where decisions are taken not involving unanimous decisions. So now we are being involved and that makes us happy. I stand here as the member of the ANC and I'm going to speak differently from what my brothers had said earlier on. I would like to propose that they give the independent candidates an opportunity for them to try and fail instead of denying them the opportunity because they are going to make a lot of noise. I know that we are going to disagree, we won't agree on the same stance. But we know where we are all from and we know the truth. Much as there can be disagreements on the matter but my point is that I submit for independent candidates to be allowed to stand on their own so that they try and fail and they are afforded a fair opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Lukuta is asking your name, madam, you didn't capture it well.
Wat 25 in Mombela.
Thank you, you can proceed ma'am.
Greetings, my name is Abigail Mohakani. I'm from Matibidi Wat 8. I work for CB... CPWP. According to my understanding, an independent candidate is a person. He's the same as other political organizations. And for the independent candidate to be in that position, he is elected by us, the people. We elect the independent candidates because we understand them. Even those that have been maybe given positions by their political organizations, they are people whom we have been staying with. You cannot choose someone whom you do not know. We chose those people because they have been staying in the same community as us for a long time. Now, we are asking that they be given an opportunity to can also go ahead as the other political organizations. Now that is my plea, that we should not sideline those people. They have been staying in those very same communities and they are chosen by people. I thank you.
Yeah, Honorable Lukuta, same to. What is your name?
Abigail Mohakani.
Abigail Mohakani, Honorable Lukuta. Abigail Mohakani, veteran. Mohakani, yes. Now, can we have hands? Is there anyone who want, who's persuaded to talk? Yeah, now we are taking a decision, okay. Oh, I'm advised that you are the first one. Yeah, you've made your input, let's get the other ones, we have recorded your input. We have recorded, thanks, thanks members, I could not... So this our last session. These are our last hands, any hand? Okay. I just hold, this are our last four.
But they are suggesting or proposing that there should be insertion for the candidate, the independent candidate to also be part. My concern only will be the question of measures in play that can be put in place actually to prevent cheating when independent candidates are also participating. Because what most people are scared of, it's clear that they are afraid that from outside might come and have a greater influence within the system. My view is that what we need is a firm system that will ensure that there's no cheating.
Thanks very much Sabo Nga Puti. We must introduce the IEC. They are here as observers. In fact, all our meetings, since we started with the oral submissions, Chairperson, Commissioner Mashinini. But here we are joined by Uku, U provincial electoral officer. No, Tandito, outreach officer. We thank and appreciate your presence to listen to the views of the community. On behalf of the committee, we want to thank you political parties, individuals who has made submissions to this meeting. We have listened to all the views you have submitted. The committee, when they were taking notes and our research team there. When we conclude all the public hearings throughout the country, we are going to take all the notes and deliberate as the committee. On the options and the views that you have suggested. The committee members among themselves, they will argue on this or the other. Once the committee has consulted a report, they will submit to the National Assembly. The National Assembly will then debate and consider it and refer it to the National Council of Provinces. The NCOP will discuss, they may decide to come back to community and consult further. Once the NCOP has done all its process and considered the report. They will then submit it to the President of the Republic. For the President to assent it into law. Once all the processes have been completed, it then be subjected for implementation in the year 2024. So as we stand here as a committee, we don't have a view on the options we must take. We want to thank staff of parliament. And yourself as the team who assists us with these logistics. They important your discipline. To understand the process we are engaged on. We understand that there's going to be difference views. But we are imagining from this meeting with your views that we have recorded. Want to thank members of parliament for respecting yourselves as you stand before us. And want to acknowledge, I appreciate your respect on the submission and the conversation with the portfolio committee. Tomorrow we are going to MLU. And after that, we are going to Mittelbeck to do the same process. So we are going to receive inputs in the manner we have done today. Thank you very much and thank members for listening to the views. And the meeting has adjourned. And the meeting has adjourned.